Whenever you're ready, Mr. Chairman, 6:30.
Good evening, folks. We're gonna give this meeting a minute or two. And I just want to let people know Chairman Perrin is with us via Zoom. So he'll be running the meeting if there's any issues.
Am I in?
Yes, yes. Mr. Chairman, you're on, sir. Go ahead.
Oh, great. Thank you. Apologize for the delay, technical difficulties here. I'm out of state. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. I appreciate that. 6:33. Let's just get right into the meeting. Welcome to the Lowell City Board of Appeals Meeting for 10/25/21. Due to the pandemic, we are able to join remotely, be live in person, join on LTC or Zoom or call-in. It's such undoing and hopefully we'll be able to maintain contact. Hope everyone's well. If we jump into continued business, ZBA 2021-15 for variance. Ernest Dorante at 545 Broadway Street, Section 5.1 and Section 6.1. Ernest Dorante, on behalf of Olazio Romano, has applied to Lowell's zoning board of appeal for variance approval to convert an existing warehouse into a 12-unit residential building at 545 Broadway Street. The property is located in an urban mixed-use UMU zoning district and requires variance approval per Section 5.1 for relief from dimensional requirements and Section 6.1 for relief from on-street parking requirements and for any other relief required under Lowell zoning ordinance. This proposal also requires approval for the planning board, site plan review per Section 11.4.2 to construct more than three dwelling units and special permit per auto of 12 for use. Some petitions here tonight?
He is present, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead, sir. Do you want to just name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Ernest Dorante. I'm on behalf of the owner for 545 Broadway. We're requiring some, we have some parking issues that we're looking for variance on that. And we have some density problem. And it's non-conforming actually for the property itself because it doesn't meet the requirement. The other thing that we're looking for relief for, since that we have parking outside, the parking were not there before, so the existing doesn't have the requirement, doesn't meet the requirement. What we did there, we did get the curb court smaller in according to the city recommendation. We only can provide 15 parking for 12 units. And we know that we're gonna need a special permit on that. And I think we are eligible for parking sharing due to the amenities that we chose. We have a bike rack there. I don't know if you can see it. I think we have about like nine bike racks there. So that will be considered as an amenities for parking sharing. We also have an handicap parking there. And we do have, we do have the, all the other requirement, which is drainage due to the impervious floor that we have in the front, which is the parking in the front. We also provide a dumpster, not in the street, and it's separated by fence so that way it has no access to the street. We provide a 25-feet-wide curb court. We provide also landscaping on both sides, front and in front of the building, which is, on the setback area has some landscaping. And in the very front, which is on the sidewalk, we do have some landscaping. And if there is any question, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you, sir. Just in the comments, we do have a question from the water department to place a condition for stormwater permit. Are you aware of that?
I'm sorry?
Said, in our notes, we have a condition from water department for a stormwater permit.
Right, it's for, it's two parking per unit. If I'm aware of that, that's for sure. That's one of the, of the variance we're looking for.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. At this point, I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Like to open up to the board, Dan?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I think, for me, you know, this conversion of the warehouse to 12 units makes sense. So I know you're looking for quite a bit of relief in terms of parking. I think the overall goal of this project will actually work well in the interest of the city. So I have no objections and I wish the very best of luck. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair Shaw.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chairman. I agree. I think this is gonna be a good revitalization of the project. And thank you for working with DPD to try to go over there. Many issues were brought up previously during the course of this that you seem to have worked out. I like the way the parking's set up, you know, with the underground. And I know, understand that at one point you didn't have it broken down as far as the dimensionals of parking, but you alleviated that with your recent plans. So that was one of the main issues that I had with regards to this, as to how that was gonna work out. And it looks like it's, looks like it's gonna go well. And yeah, I think as long as you're in agreement with the proposed condition regarding the stormwater permit, I think this is something that I could approve. So, thank you. I wish you the best of luck.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you very much through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask a couple of questions, but there's a lengthy number of comments from the engineering department in the letter dated October 13th. I think there's six different comments from them. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that letter.
If you could refresh my memory on that, because I haven't said so many questions.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, it would be great if you could refresh.
Well, the first one addresses the sewer, which you know about.
Right, we do know that. And we provide the details, which is, we provide to engineering a tom drive that has all the details because we had someone go over and put a camera to the sewer. And they agree that it's viable. It's good for what we're doing.
Wonderful. Okay. And the second one is regarding the location of the planter outside of the applicant's property line.
Yeah, we did remove that due to the space that we didn't have enough space to, because what happened is at first, we mentioned to have, to have trees on the sidewalk. But our engineer, when they looked at it, they say, "We don't have enough space for the pedestrians." So we end up taking them out. It was three of them, so they're no longer there. So we all meet that at the last session that we have here.
So are you revising the landscape plan? Has that been submitted?
I do have a landscape plan. The only thing that I don't have is the trees that were there before, that we mentioned before. We all meet that on the last meeting.
Okay, so maybe a condition would be that you resubmit a landscape plan that meets the zoning requirements?
Sure, sure. That's correct.
And then item three is the paving of sidewalks, driveways, openings, concrete, other material. Permit application shall be submitted to the engineering department prior to commencement of work.
Sure, that has to be in accordance with ADA, so definitely that would be enormous.
And then item four is any work being conducted within the city of Lowell right of way will require a street opening permit from the city of Lowell Engineering Office.
Absolutely.
Yep. And the last, well, second to last, all construction completed within the city of Lowell right of way shall conform with the American Disabilities Act ADA and Massachusetts Architect Access Board AAB requirements.
That's correct. Yes, that's correct.
And the last one is the applicant shall include utilities plans, existing proposed ingrading plan. Plan to include new concrete sidewalk in front of the property.
Correct.
I think I'd like to just kind of refer to this as a condition, that the applicant will address the issues in the comments submitted by the Lowell, city of Lowell Engineering Department in the letter dated October 13th.
That's correct.
Just to, just to kind of...
Yes, yeah.
It's easier that way, I think.
Right, right. So now we all in the same page on this. Yeah. That way, we have all the requirements.
Well, I'm excited about this project.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I mean, this is taking something that is quite a different piece of real estate today to something amazing in that location. And so I'm very encouraged. Do you have an elevator in this building?
Yes, I do. I do. That comes from the basement to the first floor.
Which I was just so happy to see.
Thank you.
That you have, you know, you take people in these, you know, the car garage, take them right up the elevator into their... It's amazing, that small footprint, you can do so much.
True, yes.
So I'm quite happy to see this. And I would just like to have those two conditions added, that the resubmit a landscape plan that meets zoning. And that we add that the applicant will address the issues of the letter to the engineering department. Okay. Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dennis. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, it's truly exciting what's going on in this area. Chris Natali comes before us to revitalize the old Furies Cafe. Alan Kazangian's project at the old McKidrich's hardware. And now you, good sir, coming along to repurpose that building. The city will absolutely benefit from your investment. We thank you. I support this proposal.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Mr. Chairman, I gotta recuse myself from this one. I have previous dealings with the petitioner, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well, sir, you know, we always pride ourselves on continued progress in the city. And as Mr. Brier has mentioned, this particular section seems to be the revitalization corner, if you will, which is making, you know, another gateway of the city better serving for all, for all the citizens. And when we have citizens that step up and do these projects within the city, it's greatly appreciated and I, you know, I echo the sounds of my colleagues. And I think this is a great, great project and I wish you great success. We do have two conditions and an overall condition to file for the comments. If I could have a motion, Mr. Clerk?
Just want to readdress the, make sure we got all the conditions down. I have, one, resubmit a landscape plan that meets zoning requirements. Two, the applicant will obtain a stormwater permit. And, three, the applicant will address all comments proposed by the engineering, city engineering department in their October 13, 2021 memo. Is that correct? So you're in agreement with all those, sir?
That's all. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Okay. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZBA 2021-15 for 545 Broadway Street for variance approval under Section 5.1 for land area per dwelling unit, minimum side yard setback, minimum area yard setback. And under Section 6.1 for off-street parking to convert an existing warehouse into 12-unit residential building with the previously mentioned conditions.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion, sir.
Second one, by the vice chairman. May I have a roll call, please?
Jess, roll call.
Sorry. Chair Perrin?
Approval conditions.
Vice Chair Peck?
Approved the conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approved the conditions.
Member McCarthy?
Approved the conditions.
Member Brier?
Approved with conditions.
Member Narohe?
Accused of...
Well, sir, you've been unanimously approved. We wish you the best of luck and appreciate the work you're doing over there.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Moving forward under continued business, we have ZB 2021-28 for special permit, New England Masonry and Landscape at 282 Lincoln Street. We have a memorandum from the petitioner seeking a continuance to 11/8/21. Any comments or concerns of the board?
I believe Attorney Gary is on the line.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just take a minute of your time?
Good evening, council. I apologize.
No, no problem. So for the record, my name is John Gary of Gary &amp; Gary LLP, 32 Church Street. I represent the petitioner, New England Masonry and Landscape. So we were initially heard from this, by this board on September 13th. We were continued at that meeting until tonight. Since that time, we have met at the site with Member Brier and four or five neighbors to this property. So as a result of that meeting, we, the applicant is moving the locations of the room screening and material storage area away from the neighborhood as best he can. In that process, the drawing of the plans is taking a little bit of time. So for that reason, we're requesting a continuance until the next available public hearing.
Very well. Thank you, council. I appreciate that. And you're, you're fine with the 11/8/21?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Thank you. That being said, if we could have a motion for continuance?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2021-28 for 282 Lincoln Street to continue the public hearing to November 8th, 2021.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
May I have a roll call, please?
Chair Perrin?
Accept the continuance to 11/8/21.
Vice Chair Peck?
Accept the continuance.
Member Callahan?
Approve continuance to November 8th, 2021.
Member McCarthy?
Approved the continuance to November 8th, 2021.
Member Brier? Member Narohe?
Approve continuance.
Council, you've been continued to 11/8. We look forward to seeing you then.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Moving forward under continued business, ZBA 2021-31 for variance, Erez Mier for 98 Humphrey Street, Section 5.1 and Section 6.1. We are, and receive the correspondence from the petitioner to withdraw without prejudice. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf?
Justice, Mr. Lanning, is Mr. Lanning here on the line?
No, he's not.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. None being heard. We will accept the communication as a withdrawal without prejudice. May I have a motion?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2021-31 for 98 Humphrey Street for withdrawal of the petition without prejudice.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Member Brier seconded.
Second. Member Brier seconded. May I have a roll call, please?
Chair Perrin?
Accept withdrawal without prejudice.
Vice Chair Peck?
Accept withdrawal without prejudice.
Member Callahan?
Accept withdrawal without prejudice.
Member McCarthy?
Accept withdrawal without prejudice.
Member Brier?
Accept withdrawal.
Member Narohe?
Accept withdrawal without prejudice.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, ZBA 2021-35 for variance, Alisa Adiguay at 1337 Bonham Avenue, Section 5.1. Alisa Adiguay has applied to Lowell's zoning board of appeals for variance approval to build an addition onto his single-family home at 1337 Bonham Avenue. The property is located in suburban, single-family, SSF zoning district and requires variance approval per Section 5.1 for the side yard setback and for any other relief required under Lowell zoning ordinance. Someone here on behalf of the petitioner?
Yeah, go ahead, sir. He's here, Mr. Chairman. Just name and address for the record, sir.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, the chairman, members of the board, and every other person here. My name is Alisa Adiguay. I live in 1337 with my family. We've been there for like 19 years and we hope to live there for additional 30 years, maybe pass it on to our kids. But anyway, what we're here to do, what we are applying for the variance relief is, we want to build a sitting area on top of our two car garage. We're not going to build out. We're going to build up. That's the only thing, when the project is completed, it will not bring even one additional car into the area. It will not add to global warming. It will not be a detriment, you know, to the neighborhood. As a matter of fact, it will snuggle neatly into the neighborhood. A house, you know, two houses before mine has exactly the same pattern. And across the street, a house directly after mine to the, you know, left also has a similar pattern. They're renovated maybe four years ago. And what we're trying to do here is just to add a sitting, you know, area to the parking garage. And that's it.
Thank you, sir. At that point, I'd like to open up to public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Favor?
Mr. Chairman, we have someone at the podium for, in favor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So if you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, I will. My name is Rodney Elliott. I live at 15 Cresta Drive. I'm speaking as a private resident. I just wanted to come down to speak on behalf of this petition. It's not expanding the existing footprint. I have known the Yarowijis and their five boys and his wonderful wife. I don't know how you did it with five boys, but they're five wonderful young men. And I've known them since they moved into the neighborhood. So this petition, as you know, just seeks to not expand the existing footprint. The existing garage is grandfathered. And this variance will just allow them to build a sitting area so there's no additional rooms being built. So I support it. I hope you look favorable upon, upon this variance request. And it certainly will not alter the character of the neighborhood. There's plenty of parking and it's just providing an adjustment to the side yard setback. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time coming in and speaking behalf of your neighbor. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Like to open up to the board? Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm fully in favor of this proposal. It will further enhance the beauty of an already, the beauty of your home. And your neighbors, neighbors also will reap the benefit of the way that you care for this property. So I wish you the very best. You're already enhancing, as I said, a beautiful home and the neighborhood as well. I support the petition fully.
Thank you. Robert?
Mr. Chairman, seeing that the existing property, the garage is already grandfathered, I think this petition meets the criteria for a variance and I'd be favorable to granting the petitioner relief. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Dennis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I too can support this. I just want to draw attention to an interpretation that was done by the planning department, which caught my attention because it, you know, kind of sets a tone. But because of the nature of this application, I think it makes sense. The site plan doesn't meet the criteria for submission for variance where it's grown at 1 to 60 and doesn't have dimensions on it. In fact, the dimensions that we're using in the interpretation are being interpreted by the planning department for, you know, for some 19, which is a deviation of six feet. But in any event, I think it's appropriate because it's existing. You really aren't changing the footprint of the existing structure. You're only going vertical here. So once I saw what you were doing, I said, "Oh, this makes sense after all." But it's just one of those situations that I noticed that we're not following the criteria correctly. But it makes total sense for this application because you're not changing the footprint of the existing structure. So I agree with you. And your neighbors have similar structures, as you pointed out, that they have been doing additions in that area that are compatible. So it makes total sense. So I have no further questions. I think this will be a great addition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Dan?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Like my colleague said, I think this is, you know, there's no intrusion. There's no increased footprint. It only adds to the property and to the neighborhood. And just like, like one of the neighbors said, you know, this is a great addition to the home and it builds on the character of the whole neighborhood. So I think, I think the variance you're asking for, it's very minimal in terms of relief. So we have to support this. We should the very best of luck. We, we should the very best of luck. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Sean?
Uh, thank you through you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with my fellow board members. I think this would be a great addition to the, to the property. Um, it's great that you're still, you're investing in the neighborhood and, and staying within there. Certainly, uh, you certainly meet the criteria for a variance. Uh, there is a special hardship in this because the, you're already grandfathered in as far as where the garage is located on the side yard setback. Um, there is, uh, the relief can be granted without the substantial detriment to the public good, and, um, it won't nullify from, or derogate from the intent of zoning. So, um, I can fully be in support of this, and I wish you the absolute best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Well, I wholeheartedly agree with, with my colleagues. The property is very well maintained. I did visit the sites and, um, you know, a very popular family over there. So your, uh, your neighbors and others speak very kindly of you, and, uh, having the sport in the, uh, chambers tonight, uh, reflects that. So I'm in support of this. I, I do wish you the best, and with that, may I have a motion, Mr. Clerk?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2021-35 for 1337 Bonham Avenue for variance approval under Section 5.1 for minimum side yard setback to build an addition to a single-family residential building.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Chair Perrin.
Approved.
Vice Chair Peck.
Approved.
Member Callahan.
Approved.
Member McCarthy.
Approved.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Narohe.
Approved.
So you've been unanimously approved.
Thank you.
We wish you the best of luck, and, uh, thank you for your time.
All right. Thanks.
Moving forward on the new business, EBA 2021-45, a variance at 62 Gorum LLC, property located at 62 Gorum Street, Section 6.1. 62 Gorum Street LLC has applied to Lowell's zoning Board of Appeal for variance approval to redevelop the existing building into two ground floor commercial space totaling approximately 2,000 square feet and five townhouse-style residential units on the second and third floors at 62 Gorum Street. Property is located in the urban mixed-use UMU zoning district and requires variance approval per Section 6.1 per leave from the off-street parking requirement and for any other relief required on Lowell's zoning ordinance. This proposal also requires approval from a planning board, a site plan review per Section 11.4.2, to construct more than three dwelling units, a special permit for 6.1.6 to reduce the parking requirement by 50%, and a special permit per Article 12 for use. The petitioner may speak a little bit about your project.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, for the record, my name is John Geary of Geary &amp; Geary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. Here tonight representing the applicant, 62 Gorum Street LLC. And with us tonight is Leo Montero, the principal of 62 Gorum Street LLC. I do not see our engineer on the line, but that's okay. We can proceed, uh, without, without his assistance. As the chairman mentioned, we're here tonight, uh, requesting a variance for lack of off-street parking associated with the redevelopment of this property at 62 Gorum Street. Uh, the property's in the UMU zoning district. It contains approximately 3,196 square feet of land. Uh, it's currently a vacant building, dilapidated, two-and-a-half-story building, uh, situated on the site. 62 Gorum Street is in the, is also within the downtown historic district at the very busy intersection of Gorum Street and Appleton Street. Uh, the existing structure was the former site of the Dana's Fruit and Confectionery Market. Dana's Market operated out of this site for decades. Uh, they operated out of the entire first floor, and, uh, they had kitchen space on the second floor along with a couple of residential units. The building is currently vacant, as I indicated, and in the state of disrepair, with a portion of the rear building having collapsed into the property. Uh, the redevelopment of this building will require a complete interior and exterior restoration along with extensive structural work in order to restore the building back to its historical standards and to enhance or to secure the structural integrity of the building. The applicant is proposing to use the existing footprint of the building, which encompasses virtually all of the lot except for a, a thin alleyway, narrow alleyway on the north side of the property. The proposal calls for the redevelopment of the existing structure into a mixed-use building consisting of two commercial, two first-floor commercial units and five residential units on the second and third floors. The residential units will range in size from 702 square feet to 921 square feet. All five units, all five residential units will be townhouse-style, so the bedrooms will be on the upper floor, the third floor. The elevation plans that we presented tonight have been worked on in conjunction with Steve Stoll from the, the administrator for the Historic Board, um, and were completed with the idea of restoring this building back to its, its historical standards. Of course, we'll still need Historical Board approval, and we hope to be on that agenda soon. Uh, the applicant has all been, also been working closely with the Building Commissioner, David Fuller, in order to plan for the restoration of the, of the facade and to shore up the structural integrity of the building. If you've been by the building, you likely notice that there's been some interior demolition started. That was done with the oversight of the Building Commissioner and in order to, uh, shore up the structural integrity of the building. It should also be noted by the board that the applicant, Leo Montero, has an impeccable reputation with the building department and the, and the DPD staff based on other projects he's done in the city. Most recently, he restored the, uh, the mansion at 1180 Middlesex Street and the carriage house that's associated with that mansion into residential units. The neighbors, uh, love what he, what he's done with the project. He's a hands-on developer, hands-on property manager, and, uh, he intends to do the same with this project. One of the challenges that this property has or faces is the fact that we cannot provide any off-site, I'm sorry, off-street parking. Uh, since the property doesn't have any off-street parking, the applicant requested and received a, a special permit from the planning board last Monday on October 18th pursuant to Section 6.1.6 of the ordinance, which allows for the off-street parking requirements of Section 6.1.4 to be reduced by 50% in the UMU zone, zoning district if the property is located within 1,500 feet of a municipal parking facility. The applicant also received a special permit for use and a site plan approval from the planning board on the 18th. So under the, uh, current zoning, the project would require two parking spaces per dwelling unit, or in this case, total of 10 parking spaces. But because the special permit was issued by the planning board, uh, last Monday, that requirement is reduced to 50%. So we're required to have five off-street parking spaces associated with the residential component of this project. Despite the fact that we do not have any or cannot provide any onsite parking, the applicant is competent that there are other accommodations that the, can be made in order to alleviate the need for the onsite parking. For example, the property is located directly this, across the street from an, uh, outside municipal parking facility, which is, which is enormously underutilized. The property is also within a few hundred feet of the Edward J. Early Jr. Municipal Parking Garage and is also within a short walk to the Gallagher Transportation Terminal, all of which allows for convenient access to public transportation and municipal parking. Uh, rideshare programs have also become a way of life in, in urban settings, and we imagine that tenants that occupy this property will take advantage of that type of transportation. We're providing, uh, bike storage within the units, so anybody, tenants that are interested in transportation via bike will have that option available to them. We have provided the board with a parking allotment letter from the parking director indicating that there is sufficient capacity in the Edward J. Early Jr. Parking Garage for any overnight demand associated with this project. The, the board, I'm sorry, the staff, uh, had a few comments on their memo, so I'd just like to take a moment and go through those comments now. So the first comment just speaks to the request, which we, which I've already gone over. The second comment, uh, talks about the redevelopment of what was known as the Dana's Market. Uh, we talked about that as well. Third comment, uh, notes the approvals that are required here. As I mentioned, we received our approvals from the planning board last Monday evening for a site plan approval and, uh, two special permits. We are here tonight for the variance for parking, and we will be before the Historic Board within the next month or two for the Historic Permit. Comment number four, um, notes that the only, the only request here before your board is the off, lack of off-street parking. Uh, it also notes that, that the bylaws, the zoning bylaws, allow for the applicant to meet his off-street parking demand by leasing spaces in a municipal facility. Unfortunately, the city doesn't entertain that option anymore, so we're here before you asking for variance for, lack of off-street parking. Parking, uh, I'm sorry. Comment number five speaks to the parking allotment letter that I had already mentioned. Comment number six, uh, notes that the, uh, the developer does not, the applicant does not intend to expand the footprint, will be working within the existing footprint, and Leo will go through that with you in a few minutes. Comment number eight, uh, the, the staff notes that no landscape plan is required because, again, the, the, uh, building takes up just about the entire site. Comment number nine speaks to exterior lighting. Any, any lighting has to be approved by the Historic Board, so we'll go through that process, uh, with our proposed lighting. We're working, uh, Leo is working closely with Steve, uh, to get the appropriate, uh, lighting on the, uh, exterior of the building. Uh, there's a note here from the neighborhood planner that she's very excited about the, uh, the re-investment in this particular, uh, row on Gorum Street. The DPD director, the assistant city manager, is very excited about this project and enthusiastically endorses it. There are several comments by the, uh, from the engineering department. We're happy to agree to a condition that, uh, we satisfy the concerns of the engineering department, uh, prior to issuance of any permit. Uh, most of those comments are, are just factual. Uh, we have had, uh, one of the comments notes that the source service should be replaced unless it can be confirmed via video inspection for suitable reuse. We have confirmed that it is suitable for reuse. We will add the existing, we'll make sure the engineer adds the existing, uh, utilities to the site plan, so that's visible on the site plan, and we'll, we'll comply with whatever other, uh, uh, concerns that the engineering department has. Uh, there's also a note regarding sidewalks. The engineering department would like us to replace the sidewalk in front of this, um, this building. We're happy to, uh, to condition the approval upon the replacement of the sidewalk. In fact, there was, I mentioned we were approved at the planning board last Monday evening, and there were four conditions associated with that approval. I'll just take a minute and go through those conditions, and we're happy to incorporate those into, into this approval if the board wishes to do so. So the first condition was, the applicant will work with the Historic Board to approve exterior lighting and materials. The second condition, the applicant shall repair the sidewalk and wheelchair rim. The third condition, the applicant shall submit a transportation demand, uh, transportation management demand plan subject to final approval by DPD. We're working on that and happy to incorporate that into this, of course. And the last fourth, last and fourth condition was, the applicant shall obtain stormwater permit from the Lower Regional Wastewater Utility. Of course, we need to do that and happy to condition this approval on that. So at this point, I'll hand the presentation over to Leo, and he'll go through the, uh, the elevations and, and, uh, floor plans with the board.
Thank you very much, Counsel. I appreciate that outline.
Leo, you are muted.
I am so sorry about that. Good evening, uh, members of the board. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Leo Montero. Uh, I am the property owner, the manager for 62 Gorum Street, uh, 62 Gorum LLC. I will go over the plans, uh, that we have proposed. As you can see here, some existing elevations, uh, for the building. Where we're proposing on the exterior, as far as the addition goes to, um, just to, uh, reiterate what Attorney John Geary had mentioned, we are not, uh, expanding the footprint of the building. We are expanding the square footage of the building by adding this third-floor addition, uh, here. So this is what we're doing. It, uh, on the existing plans, uh, that addition is not present, obviously. Uh, the roof is just flat, and since this is the portion of the building that has had the structural collapse, the, there was a failure in the roof drainage system that caused the flat roof to cave in, and we had to do all the, uh, structural shoring in order to, um, remediate the condition. And this is structured, this back structure is having to be completely rebuilt, and obviously we are, uh, we would be rebuilding in order to accommodate, um, this third-floor, uh, portion, uh, where the bedroom for the townhomes will be, uh, included. Moving on to the interior, um, floor plans, um, we will be keeping two storefronts, two separate storefronts at the moment. We have a, a commercial space A on the left-hand side. Uh, we will be adding a residence lobby, uh, here, an entrance. The existing conditions of the property, the property owners would have to, um, go through the businesses in order to go up to their existing units. Uh, we are proposing to improve that, obviously, and bring the building back up to code by having, uh, this existing, um, uh, building, this residence lobby here with the mailboxes, uh, and then this is the access to the units upstairs. We are, uh, adding, uh, commercial storage in the, in the existing basement, uh, for the commercial spaces as well. Uh, being in a tight site, obviously no parking, no exterior, uh, places, we feel that this is a good, uh, add-value proposition for the, for the potential businesses that might be interested in, uh, uh, being established in a city. Towards the back of the building, this is where the alley, existing alleyway that we own, uh, we are, this is all existing conditions within the building. This is an exist, uh, existing means of vigorous that we are keeping. There's also another one here. We'll go up to the second floor so we can understand, uh, how this will work better. Here in the back, residents will be having an opportunity to, uh, entering the building towards the back of the building, uh, here. And we are proposing also vertical bike storages, uh, five vertical bike storages here. The trash is going to be located inside the building for the residents. Uh, this is a resident, a residential hall, so residents only will have access towards the, either entry in the back if they're coming in with their bikes, et cetera, and then their guests can access their units to the front, through the front lobby. Also here, the stairs to the basement for the commercial spaces, and then the residents will be able to go up to their units here. On the second floor, as you can see, the, this is the existing portion, this is the existing historic house, uh, for the property. Uh, the two existing units here will remain, obviously, they are completely gutted at this point, uh, they're going to be brand-new. But we are proposing, uh, all, uh, five units on this floor, one, two, three, four, five, to be, uh, townhome-style units. The existing two front units will be, uh, two bedrooms and two bathrooms, uh, units, and these units in the back here, these three units will be also, uh, townhome styles, but one bedroom and a home office. And the reason for that is because we are landlocked in a couple of elevations, so we are proposing something that, just clear this real quick. We are proposing something that makes sense in the long haul for the building. This is where the area that I'm talking about. We are landlocked, landlocked here and landlocked here, and this is all due to existing conditions. This is how the building has, was built and renovated, uh, decades ago. So we are trying to, you know, we are being respectful of that and obviously trying to plan a development that makes sense. We are, uh, having the windows facing the alleyway, which, uh, I'll show it briefly on the site plans, um, for the bedrooms, for the egres, et cetera. And to the right here, we see, to the right here, we see, uh, the bedroom, the master suite for the townhome, for the townhome units, uh, that are on the existing portion of the house. I'll go ahead and show the renderings that we- that we came up with for the project. The existing storefronts, as John mentioned, will be, we are working closely with the historic department to rebuild, repair, restore, do what we need to do in order to bring the building back. This is where you can see the proposed addition. All colors, all lights are, you know, will be worked on with Steve Stoll from the historic board. These are the conditions that don't want us to have windows on the site, so we are being respectful of that. The existing facade and the existing building will be worked on as far as repointing, you know, fixing whatever needs to be fixed. And I'll quickly just show the site plans. I'm sorry, the plot plan, the certified plot plan for the building. This is the alleyway. It's all, it's an existing alleyway that would be used as it has been used in the past, but we will be enhancing by adding a second, you know, more means of vigorous towards the back here and here. Dumpsters and trash removal will happen on a week, on a as-need basis. Commercial spaces will have their own trash rooms with their own trash pickups, and we'll be managing, obviously, the residential trash pickup. And I guess that's all I have.
Thanks, Leo. So ultimately, this project and the other project we'll be presenting tonight at 80 Gorham Street are transformational developments for this, for this particular neighborhood and for the city. The projects will enhance the quality and character of the neighborhood without any detrimental impact whatsoever. Relief can be granted without any subs, without any derogation or detriments to the public good, without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent of the zoning. So for those reasons, we respectfully request issuance of the variance that we're requesting tonight. We're happy to answer any questions of the board once the public has a chance to weigh in.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Once again, we do appreciate the full background and outline for this project, because I think it's fair and enlightening to me, I'm sure, and not only, but to the public regarding this site. That being said, I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Would you like to open up to the board, Robert?
Mr. Chairman, I agree with Attorney Gary. This building has needed repurposing, and it looks like this project will be very beneficial to the city. I noted that the planning issued a few conditions, and I'm favorable to granting the relief so long as the petitioner, you know, follows up, follows up with those conditions that were required by the planning board. That's the four, the four conditions. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Van?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I agree. I think the word transformative was, was used to describe this project. It's really going to lift and transform this neighborhood, this section of the city. You know, I think, I think Attorney Gary, you did a very detailed narrative of what the project's going to be like. Went over all the comments, conditions, input from the city and from the planning board. And you've been forthcoming and very responsive, receptive, you know, agreeing to everything that's recommended and all the conditions of the planning board. You know, I really think this is actually an amazing project, and it's going to transform not just downtown, but the city as a whole. So I wish you the best of luck, and thank you for your investment and input in the city. So it's appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Van. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Truly a welcome project. The petitioner, he's received high praise from all the city departments he's worked with. I'd like to add my compliments for his investment. And I look forward with great anticipation to seeing it completed. I support the petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Sean?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with my fellow board members. I mean, this is going to be, this is a fantastic project that's laid out. And for a building that has been in disrepair and disarray for a long, long, long time. It really needs, really needs to be rehabbed. And I guess the one question I did have. So I'm looking at the, the back units numbers, three, four, and five. And I see on the top floor, we got a, you got the bedroom, and then you got an office space. And it looks like, and each of them says there's a light tunnel, but I didn't see that on the renderings on the roof. Is that, so that's going to be a roof, rooftop lighting coming down from the, from the roof area? Like, I guess it's going to be a window? Like a roof, a window to the roof, or?
Correct. This is similar to a skylight. It's pretty much mostly built into the frame, less maintenance, in my opinion. And we are, we do have a portion of the attic space that we need to cover. So it's literally a tunnel, a piece of highly reflective metal that runs from the roof line to the ceiling line of the unit just to bring in, you know, natural light to that space.
Okay.
But it doesn't show on the rendering because of the angle of the rendering that we have.
Yeah.
But they will be added. They will be part of the project.
Okay. No, I just wanted, I just wanted to double-check that because, yeah, I didn't see it on the rendering. And I think that'd be a very good added feature for that side of the building. And those top floors to have some sort of natural light shining through, considering on the other side, you have the old landmark video on that other side, that's kind of, that there's no other windows that are available for any light. So again, I think this is fantastic, fantastic project. And I think it's going to be well-acquired for the neighborhood, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Dana?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of questions, but I want to start by saying how grateful I am to see this building being rescued. It's such a strong presence in the city. This intersection downtown has been poorly served by this building being left to decay as it has for so many years. And to see it being rescued is just phenomenal. I personally feel a sense of gratitude towards this applicant for taking this project on and doing so in such a manner. Just amazed at what you're able to get out of this, out of this building and still preserve two commercial spaces on the first floor. It's phenomenal, and just so happy to see it happening. I have some questions because I'm curious about the plans. The width of the alleyway where you have all these windows for these units, is that average width like six to eight feet? Or how tight a space is that? If you know what I mean?
It changes, it changes from five to five and a half feet or so. And that, and that is a good comment that you're making because these plans, the permit plans will have some revisions. We do have one too many windows on the living rooms. So we are doing some finis, finis, finis tration calculations at the moment. I have an architect working on that in order for us to be code-compliant between the, you know, the distance of the building next door and our windows.
Tricky. Very, very, it's amazed that you're, you, I'm just thrilled that you're getting this much out of this building. It really feels like we're in the North End in Boston, almost. It's very creative. And then the other
Thank you.
curiosity I had is the rear elevation shows a door going out onto the roof. Is that intended to be a potential roof deck?
No. So that is the existing elevation.
Okay.
Which it's, it's this one right here.
That's correct. Yes.
Yes. So this is the existing, so this is the existing condition of the building. So this was the service, this door was here to service the existing roof frame.
Right, sure.
For the flat roof. Yeah.
Okay.
But we were proposing to remove that and frame a full, you know, gable roof on top of the building.
So it is a sloped roof. It's not a flat roof. It has a slight pitch to it, and that makes sense. Okay.
Yeah.
And I support my fellow member suggestion that we condition this approval by adopting the four conditions from the planning board. I think that's a great idea. But I am just so excited to see this building being transformed. It's tremendous. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, certainly, Counselor Gary and Mr. Montero, this project is probably, in my opinion, one of the most important projects this city has seen in decades. The historic value on that property with the Danish market, with the Danish, with the Danish family going back decades and decades is part of the stability in the downtown. I'm sure moving forward with commercial and residential space does, does make a lot of people, will make a lot of people in the city happy. It holds a historical place in the city's heart. And you have proven to this board and to the citizens of the city the type of work and commitment that you have in the structures that you renovate. Clearly, what you did in the Highland section bodes very highly for your, for your ethics and your character and your commitment to the city. And I whole highly agree with my colleagues and Mr. McCarthy saying, you know, personally grateful that you're taking this project on as well as the other project that we'll be looking at tonight. It's, it's long overdue, and it takes, it takes a pioneer to do this type of, type of work and bring us to where we really want to be. I look forward to the, to the final product and what it's going to do to revitalize that section of the city. Those are my comments. I do have, to Mr. Clerk, it'll be one vote, and then you'll condition in the special permits. Is that correct?
I believe we only have to handle the variances for the off-street parking, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Great. That being said, any other comments or concerns by the board? None being heard. May I have a motion, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2021-45 for 62 Gorham Street for variance approval under Section 6.1 for off-street parking to redevelop, redevelop existing building into a mixed-unit commercial and residential building consisting of two ground-floor commercial units and five residential units on the second and third floors with the conditions that the previous conditions adopted by the, as well as adopting the previous conditions as set forth by the planning board.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by the vice chairman. I have a roll call, please.
Chair Perrin?
Approve.
Vice Chair Peck?
Approve with conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approve with conditions.
Member McCarthy?
Approve with conditions.
Member Brier?
Approval.
Member Narohe?
Approved with conditions.
Well, Counselor and Mr. Montero, you've been unanimously approved, not only by this board, but by the planning board. And historic board will be weighing in as well. I'm sure the citizens of this great city are appreciative.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Pleasure, pleasure.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We'll move on on the new business. We're going to take ZB 2021-47 out of order due to the correspondence on the property. So the petition type is a variance at New Gorham LLC, 80 Gorham Street, Section 6.1. New Gorham LLC has applied to Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals for variance approval to redevelop the existing building into two ground-floor commercial spaces and 12 residential units at 80 Gorham Street. The property is located in the urban mixed-use UMU zoning district and requires variance approval per Section 6.1 for relief from the off-street parking requirement and for any other relief required under Lowell zoning ordinance. This proposal also requires approval from the zoning board for site plan review per Section 11.4.2 to construct more than three dwelling units, a special permit, Section 6.1.6, to reduce the parking requirements by 50%, and a special permit per Article 12 for use. Counselor Gary?
Yes, thanks again, Mr. Chairman. And again, for the record, my name is John Geary of Geary &amp; Geary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm representing the petitioner tonight, New Gorham LLC. And with us again is Leo Montero, the principal of New Gorham LLC. It does make sense to take this project in consecutive order from the last one. The projects are very similar. They both require the redevelopment, complete restoration of a dilapidated historic building, and neither one of them have any on-street, off-street parking. But as the chairman mentioned, we're here tonight requesting a variance for lack of off-street parking. This property is also in the UMU zoning district at 80 Gorham Street. Sits on approximately 5,079 square feet of land and has a dilapidated vacant three-story building on it. If you've been by the property, you would have noticed the big red X on the, on the property. The building is unfit for any type of, anybody going in the property at all. I know that Leo has been in the property shoring up that structural integrity. 80 Gorham Street is also in the downtown historic district. It sits just three buildings off the, that busy intersection of Gorham and Appleton Street. And again, is a key piece of the rejuvenation of this corridor, Gorham Street. The block that this property sits within, it mostly consists of residential housing, office space, and retail space. So Leo's, Leo's proposed redevelopment fits right into the character of the neighborhood. The building commissioner condemned this building back in 2019. The facade of the building is bowing in towards Gorham Street. Leo is working with structural engineers in order to correct that issue. It's going to be a complex and intricate process that he'll have to go through to, to bring that building, the structural integrity of that building back. The property was previously occupied by a market with five residential units up above. The applicant is proposing to use all of these existing footprint of the building, demolish the rare one-and-a-half-story structure that's there, which is unsalvageable, unsalvageable, and expand by adding a 20-foot by 42-foot story, four-story addition. Once completed, the property will, will house two commercial units and 12 residential units. The residential units will range in size from 533 square feet to 1,044 square feet. In addition to working with the structural engineers, Leo is also working again closely with Steve Stoll from the historic board and Dave Fohle, the building commissioner. The site plan, the renderings, and the landscape plan that were provided with this application show the applicant's intention with regard to the open space to the rear of the property. There is a discrepancy between the site plan and the landscape plan. The site plan identifies the rare area as green space, where actually, we vetted this through the DPD staff. We're actually going to be using pavers, which are identified on the, on the landscape plan. So I just wanted to point out that discrepancy between the two plans, so there's no confusion. The, the pavers are pervious material, so it shouldn't be an issue. The applicant's also repairing, intending to repair the existing retaining wall along the rare property line, which will help to provide some usable open space to the tenants, of the residential tenants of this building. There are a few existing trees that will remain in place, and Leo will plant some additional shrubbery to the rear of the property. There are a few of the units that will have balconies available to the back, looking out the back of the property, which also incorporates some open space into those units. The project, again, doesn't offer any off-street parking. And similar to 62 Gorham Street, we have requested and received a special permit from the planning board pursuant to 6.1.6 of the ordinance, which allows us to reduce our parking requirements by 50% because we are within 1,500 feet of a municipal parking facility. So the parking analysis, analysis would require that we have 24 parking, off-street parking spaces for this development because there are 12 units, so two units per dwelling unit. By factoring in the reduction of 50%, we're down to 12 off-street parking spaces, and that's what our variance request is for tonight. Much like the 62 Gorham Street application, we do not feel that the off-street parking is problematic to the redevelopment of this building. We have the, the Gallagher Transportation Terminal, a very short walking distance, distance across the common. We have the early garage within a couple of hundred feet of this site. The municipal, open-air municipal parking facility directly across the street. And there are other municipal parking facilities within a close distance to this property. We're also providing bike storage at the site. We're providing the board with a transportation demand plan that will cue the tenants into what their transportation options are. There will be bus schedules, train schedules within the building available to the tenants, ride share, and any other micro-mobility solutions that, that become available as the downtown starts to develop. We also provided the board with a parking allotment letter from the parking director indicating that the early garage has suitable capacity for the man, for the overnight demand associated with any, any parking with this redevelopment. The DPD staff comments are all pretty favorable, but I'll go through those again, or as well, I should say. So the first comment, just again, goes through the development plan. We've been through that. Comment number two speaks to the required permits. So again, we received our permits from the planning board, for issuance of two special permits from the planning board last Monday, and approval of the site plan. We're before you tonight requesting the variance, and again, we will be before the Historic Board likely in December for the historic permit. Comment number five, unlike 62 Gorham Street, the building does not occupy the entire site. There is some open space in the rear, and Leo will go through that in good detail when he goes through his presentation. Comment number six speaks to the open space a little bit more. It talks about how valuable those balconies are for the units that have them. It referenced, it indicates that Leo goes above and beyond with regard to making available as much open space as he can with this redevelopment. Comment number seven speaks to snow storage. Leo will go through this. But ultimately, Leo intends to use a snow blower to push the snow towards the rear property line for snow storage purposes. Comment number eight, notes that we need Historic Board review and approval for the exterior materials and lighting. Of course, we, you know, that, we'll go through that process with the Historic Board. Comment number nine, staff doesn't have any concerns about the project. The neighborhood planner, again, is very enthusiastic about this project, as is the DPD director, Christine McCall. There are several engineering notes here as well, and of course, we can make a condition of approval on satisfying the engineering notes associated with this application. The engineering department also would like us to replace the sidewalk in front of this property. We're happy to incorporate that into the, into the approval. And we will, of course, get our, work with the stormwater team for the city to get our stormwater permit. There were conditions associated with the planning board approval. And if I could just take a minute, I'll go through those conditions as well. And if the board would like to incorporate them into this approval, we're happy to, to accommodate that request. So the first condition was, the applicant shall submit a transportation demand management plan subject to final approval by DPD, as I indicated, we're happy to do that. The second con, second condition, the applicant shall ensure that new sidewalk meets ADA standards. Comment, condition number three, the applicant shall obtain a stormwater permit for the, from the Lowell Regional Wastewater Utilities, I mentioned, we're, of course, we have to do that. And the fourth condition, the applicant will address the comments submitted by the Lowell City Engineering Department dated October 12th. So we're happy to incorporate and satisfy those conditions of the engineering department into any approval tonight. So Leo, if you could take a few minutes and go through the, the plans?
Thank you, Counselor. Leo? And Montero?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Leo Montero. I am the principal and operator of New Gorham LLC. I'll start with the exterior of the building this time, just so we can be clear of what existing, what is not. This is the rendering of the front elevation. On this project, we are also proposing to keep the existing two-store fronts. And also, the existing portion of the building is the existing brick building that currently contains five residential units. And the units are laid out as two on each floor. So one, one unit on the left on the second floor, one unit on the right. The same thing repeats on the third floor, and then we have an existing unit in the attic space. There are, there is a main entry door that can be used by the residents only. It's a nice feature that the building currently has, and we do intend to keep that. As Attorney Gary mentioned, the building does have some structural issues that we are currently in the final phases of finalizing structural plans for it. But there is a bulging that has happened in the front facade. And we, we have determined that the front facade, a good portion of the front facade will have to be rebuilt. And we also have been working with David Fowler, the building commissioner, and Steve Stoll from the Historic Board on those things as well. This is the, this, the side, this side rendering shows the proposed elevation. So again, the existing brick building is the historic structure that is to remain. Currently, there is a one-and-a-half-story Y vinyl addition that is a little bit smaller than this one that we are proposing to take it down in order to expand the building and better utilize the lot, the available lot that we have here. And so this is where we're proposing a gable roof addition to accommodate the additional units. This is another, just rendering of the back of the building, of this front, and this is the back of the building now on the other side. As mentioned by the planning board and by, by John, the, the balconies that we're proposing are for the units in the back. And we are also proposing a common area, common space for the tenants to utilize. These first-floor units will also have some balcony, some, some private patios or some private balconies, we could check. We'll figure out some screens, some sort of privacy here for them. But this pavers here that we are proposing are to be used as common for all the tenants for, you know, either go outside to have a smoke or walk their dogs or have some fresh air. The tenants for the historic building specializes, they have no balconies in their units. Most of these trees are existing. We are planning on keeping them or actually adding to them. You can see here the retaining wall that we are proposing to, to fix. It's somewhere around here, between the brick, the pavers and the, the grass area. And I'll move on to the interior plants. Just here to talk a little bit more about the existing addition. The existing plans do show existing rear section to be demolished. So that is also being, you know, taken into account. Here just show the architectural details, pretty much what we went through on the, the renderings. Going over the interior floor plans. We, as mentioned, we have the two commercial spaces, you know, with their, with their separate, separate entrances. They will also have their, you know, back-of-the-house areas where they'll have their trash storage, doors for trash removal, all through the back. Same thing here for the commercial space, the trash storage as well. Here we can see the, the main door, which is separate from the commercial spaces. So there will be a lobby, a little front lobby here for the residents, for packages, mailboxes, et cetera. So again, reemphasizing, this is the existing historic portion of the property. And this is what, you know, the back here is the addition that we are proposing. On the first floor, on the grade level, the corridor will continue. This penetration on the brick wall already exists, even though we need some, some, some work, some reinforcements. But we are keeping the, the existing opening, these existing openings here, reinforcing them accordingly. And then extending the common hall for the two new units, on, two new proposed units on the grade level. We also show here some bike storages for this property, for the residents. And the residents will also have a rear lobby through the left alleyway. They'll have a rear lobby entrance here as well. So when they come in with their bikes, they can come in here, store their bikes. They're all vertical bike storages. And on this floor also, coin-up laundry to be used by these two units so they don't have to go upstairs to do their laundries. Moving on to the second floor, again, existing house, two existing units. This hallway is existing. We are keeping the existing stairs. They work. Obviously, we will be doing some restructures, reinforcements to the stairs, but we are keeping pretty much the same layout, the same bearing walls on the existing structure. And then going to the new proposed addition, similar situation as downstairs, different layout of the units. These are two-bedroom units. They were proposed back there. Here we can see the balconies towards the back as well. Moving on to the third floor. Same condition as, as downstairs for the historic house. We are keeping everything in the same place. We do show two-bedroom units, one one-bedroom, one two-bedroom unit in the third floor. Pretty much existing to what was there before. The building has been gutted. It will be all-new, brought up to code, new mechanicals, et cetera. In the back on the third floor, these three new units that we are proposing, they will be also townhome styles. We will take advantage of the attic spaces and, you know, just build a higher addition, obviously, not going higher than the existing ridge height. But we are taking advantage of the attic spaces and bringing the bedrooms and ba, and also bathroom upstairs. So these townhomes, they'll be nice units. They'll be townhome units, you know, very, you know, on the larger size, living room, and there are three townhome units here, all two bedrooms and not one-and-a-half baths. And here we do show the private balconies for the, the unit facing the rear, the back of the property. And then upstairs, we can see the bedrooms on the historic house. Here we do have the existing attic unit. Again, it has been gutted, but we are proposing to rebuild it back up with, with all upgraded mechanicals, et cetera. And here on the addition side, we can see the proposed bedrooms, a good-sized bathroom, good-sized master closet. We feel that we have captured most of the spaces and are proposing a very, you know, well-planned and, and well-designed units for possible residence. And I guess that's what I have, and I, or... And if there are any questions, I'm here to answer. Thank you.
Thanks, Leo. So the project and the sixty, the companion project, the 62 Gorham, will enhance the quality and character of the neighborhood without any detrimental effect whatsoever. The variance can also be granted without substantial detriment to the public good or without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent of the zoning. We respectfully request approval of the variance tonight, but we're happy to answer any questions that the board or public may have.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Appreciate that. Mr. Montero, we appreciate, again, your, your overview and explanation of the site. That being said, I'd like to open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Like to open up to the board? Sean?
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. Again, a great presentation. This certainly is a, going to be another fine addition to the, to that area that, you know, another building that has been, again, out of, in disrepair and dilapidated. And in fact, it's, the X has been on it for a long, long, long time. So it's good to see that finally something is being done with this building, and you're actually trying to save it as opposed to tearing it all down and, and starting again. I like the, I like the whole concept setup, and this one even has a little back area for the residents that I think will work out pretty well, and I would be full in support of this. Oh, one, one thing I did want to bring up, Attorney Gary, I noticed that the parking letter that you got from the city?
Yes?
It had the wrong address on it. It had 82 Gorham Street on it, not 80 Gorham Street. So is, or is this, does this building have multiple addresses, or is it just 80 Gorham Street?
It's 82 Gorham Street, I'm sorry, 80 Gorham Street. I, I believe that was corrected. So I, you know, perhaps the, the typo letter got submitted, but I believe we have a parking demand allocation letter from the building, I'm sorry, from the parking director with the correct address.
Okay.
I'll get that to the planning staff.
Yep, I just want to add that into there as a, as a condition, just to make sure. So just to make sure that we're, we're on the same page, we got the record corrected. I presume it was a typo as well because of, between 62 Gorham and 80 Gorham, I mean, it happens. So, but just want to make sure we got it correct on the record. So other than that, if, again, if you're, also, if you're in agreement about, you know, satisfying the comments of the engineering department and adopting the conditions of the planning board, I'm in full support of this, so I wish the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, just like Mr. Callahan said, another great project, amazing, you know, rehab, revitalization of this parcel. It's only going to benefit downtown and the city below for, for decades to come. So I have no objections, and I wish, again, the best of luck to the applicant. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Robert?
Mr. Chairman, this building is evidently in bad shape, so this is a very, another very welcome project. I'd be favorable to granting relief with the, with the petitioner following up, adopting the conditions that were required by the planning board. So good luck to the petitioner. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions, but I'm, again, blown away by the ability to turn this building into something that really represents the character of that neighborhood and the times of trying to adapt residential downtown in a meaningful manner that really kind of takes advantage of the population looking to relocate there. The first question is, you stopped at 12 units. Looking at the size of the third and fourth-floor units, you, you could have potentially moved it to, you know, 14 units or something. I'd just like to ask, what was the reason to stop at 12? I'm glad you did, but I'd just like, like to know, is that, is that, is there another reason for that?
That's a great question, actually. I think the thought behind it was the, the need for an elevator. If we had to go up another story, for another full story, we, we would trigger that. On the existing, on the attic unit, the, the front door is actually in the third floor. So you go up, you go up from here up to the unit. Now, this is all existing conditions. So we're, we're trying to use the building, use what we have, currently build upon it. You know, there's no height restrictions on this neighborhood too, so we could go up, you know, another 10, 20 stories if we wanted to, obviously, you know, with the proper approvals. But, but I guess that, to answer your question, that, that was it. It was the elevator. It was what else would trigger if, if we keep going up and increasing the units?
And then unlike 62 Gorham... And then unlike sixty-two Gorm Street, you have the potential for ADA compliant units on the first floor. Is that your intent with the two residential units in the back?
I, I guess we could provide that, especially since we are gonna be working on, on, on the grading. I, I could definitely look into it. It might, it might not be something that is, is too difficult to do, but we could, we could definitely work on that, on the permit plans, we can look deeper into it.
I, I just love the idea of accomplishing ADA compliant units when we can, and this certainly looks like the potential in a building with twelve residential units. I kind of like to see one or two of them being included for ADA access. But you've, you've done a tremendous amount of work here with incorporating bike storage, incorporating laundry facilities, balconies, really utilizing this site to its fullest. What about your other project on Middlesex Street and Canton Incorporated Electric Heat Pump Systems for all the units? As a way of moving away from fossil fuels? Is that something we're looking at here as well?
Absolutely, absolutely. Tenants are thrilled with what they have there. The system has worked flawlessly through the first winter and also through the first summer. It, it is my intent to keep on using same, the same system from the same manufacturer. I, I wouldn't change that. The tenants are reporting tremendous savings on energy bills, believe it or not, due to their high efficiency. So it is our intention to keep as much as of electrical, uh, uh, electrical units as possible. We are currently working on load calculations for the building, and then obviously, you know, with, with the proper approvals, we can get deeper, into deeper conversations with the power company as well.
Last question, I promise. The existing four chimneys on the property, are they being utilized in any of the units?
No. They, they're currently, they're all, they haven't been utilized, you know, for a long, long time. We, we do not intend to have fireplaces or, you know, or, or vent anything through them. They will be restored just for historic purposes.
I understand, I understand. It's just a lovely feature, but I, it does take a lot of effort to make those into functioning chimneys, I'm sure. So I, I absolutely support the idea of the, adopting the planning board conditions for this application as a condition of our approval, and I think that the parking relief makes total sense, especially just in light of the StanTech parking study that was done in the spring, which really highlights the fact that the garages downtown are underutilized in the evenings in particular, that there's so much capacity down there. In fact, I'd like to see that StanTech study being utilized in our engineering reviews, if we could, just to help us understand just these neighborhoods when we have these issues. That study was, I thought, eye-opening, especially downtown with the parking garages.
Yes, and I think that was the city's hope, is that that, this is the exact effect that study would have in opening up more opportunities, realizing that we don't need so much space taken up by parking, that we can better utilize the downtown parcels for housing and commercial space.
Thank you. I have no further questions, and I really look forward to this project happening. It's amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Mark?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Sixty-two and eighty Gorm Street is a winning parlay for the city. That's my bet. I'm fully in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, certainly, Counsel, and Mr. Montero, you, you've brought, you've brought these projects forward, and my comments stand for this site as, as the previous site, well overdue and looking forward to your projects, this project here, and continued projects. And I, I do appreciate the update on the, the power savings of the units that, on your previous site, in transforming that to your other site, so you truly are a pioneer. With that being said, any other comments, concerns, none being heard. Mr. Clerk, may I have a motion?
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion for ZB twenty-twenty-one dash forty-seven for eighty Gorm Street for variance approval under section six point one for off-street parking to redevelop existing building into a mixed-use commercial and residential building consisting of two ground-floor commercial units and twelve residential units on the rear first floor and second and third floors, with the conditions that the applicant is to obtain and submit a new parking letter to DPD with correct address, satisfy the comments of the engineering department as contained in the DPD memo, and adopt, and also readopt all the conditions of the planning board.
We have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Briere. We have a roll call.
Chair Perrin?
Approval conditions.
Vice Chair Peck?
Approved conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approved conditions.
Member McCarthy?
Approved with conditions.
Member Briere?
Approval.
Member Narohe?
Approved with conditions.
Well, gentlemen, you've been unanimously approved. We wish you the best of luck moving forward with your project and look forward to the outcome. Thank you for your continued commitment to the city, Mr. Montero.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, thank you all for your time tonight.
Pleasure. Take care. Moving forward on the new business, ZBA twenty-twenty-one dash sixty-six for special permit, poignant signs on Seventy Industrial Avenue East, section six point three, poignant signs on behalf of Cannabis has applied to Low Zoning Board of Appeals for special permit approval to install two internally illuminated signs at Seventy Industrial Avenue East. The property is located in the high-rise commercial HRC zoning district and requires special permit approval per section six point three for internally illuminated signage and for any other release required in low zoning. Any other here this evening?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. This is Jason Fennett with Pointe and members of the board.
Evening, sir. Tell us a little bit about your petition.
Absolutely. Do you want me to share my screen, or you can see the application in front of you in the meeting room? So, our client formerly was Patriot Care, and they had an illuminated sign on the building, and they have rebranded their company to Cannabis. And in June, we received the permit for the non-illuminated signage facing the two, one on one side of the building, one on the other side of the building, which you can see in the drawings. And we have before you tonight for a special permit to allow illumination of those signs. The previous Patriot Care sign was illuminated, and we're asking for a special permit to illuminate these two signs that are shown within the documents.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
That being said, let's open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Like to open up to the board? Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, I think for me, sir, this, this is pretty straightforward. I think it's just, you know, they're upgrading, they're changing their name, so it's just marketing, it's, you know, it's like a, updating the marketing signs because they changed their name, so to me, it's straightforward. I don't have any comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Robert?
Mr. Chairman, looking at the DPD's comments, I think the sign meets the requirements under section two point nine on the sign, on the size, so I would be favorable to granting relief on, on this sign. I suppose, I don't think we, we want to talk about when, when the sign is lit, you know, during what, what time of the day, and what, maybe that can be a part of the condition we, we are, we are, we are pointing the, the condition for that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Sean?
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. I like the new addition of the sign, the rebranding of the, of the previous, previous business there. It's in the commercial district, so I don't think it'll be too much of an annoyance to any of the, any local residents. But a couple of things, though, what are the, I mean, we usually do the hours of illumination, we're usually, we usually try to condition that with one hour before sunrise to one hour after sunset or close of business, whichever comes later. Do you know what the hours of operation for the business are?
I believe it's nine PM, but I will check right now.
Okay.
We'll close it, I, but I will check right now.
So it sounds that if it's nine PM, I mean, it won't go any later than ten PM, as far as the hours of illumination are concerned, if you want to confirm that, but that's what our, our usual standard is, is with regards to, with regards to hours of illumination.
They would be fine with that.
Okay. All right. That being said, if that, if you're in agreement with that condition, I, I would fully support this, this request for a special permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Three, I'd like to ask a couple of questions, but I think that this is a, an improvement graphically, and also the size of the signage being significantly less than the four hundred feet allowable, square feet allowable, in the two hundred and forty-two square foot size that you're proposing is, is great restraint shown. The rebranding, so it was just recently that we had Patriot Care go in, was it like a year and a half ago, and suddenly we're rebranding? Can you just give me some information as to what happened and why we're rebranding so soon?
Sure. I actually think Patriot Care was two thousand and sixteen or seventeen? Time flies, I know that. But the, the prompting of the name change is with the adult-use allowance in Massachusetts when that passed, they want to move more from just being Patriot Care, which was strictly medical, to show that they are servicing both the medical market and the adult recreational use market, and that's what led to the name change.
Thank you. That makes total sense. And I, I think that this graphically definitely improves the appearance of the, of the building, so, and I, I kind of like the name better, too, so good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dennis. Mark?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. That being said, I'd like to have a motion, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion on ZB twenty-twenty-one dash forty-six for Seventy Industrial Ave. East for special permit approval under section six point three to install two internally illuminated signs, with the condition that the hours of illumination shall be one hour before sunrise to one hour after sunset or close of business, whichever comes later.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. May I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. McCarthy. May I have a roll call, please?
Chair Perrin?
Approved with condition.
Vice Chair Peck?
Approved with conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approved with condition.
Member McCarthy?
Approved with condition.
Member Briere?
Approval.
Member Narohe?
Approved with conditions.
So you've been unanimously approved with continued success at that site.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and the members of the board. I appreciate your time. Appreciate your time.
Take care.
Thank you.
Moving forward on to other business, we have the approval for the twenty-twenty-two meeting schedule. Any comments, concerns, revisions, edits, deletions? None being heard. May I have a motion to approve the schedule?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the schedule for twenty-twenty.
May I have a second?
Twenty-twenty-two.
Twenty-twenty-two. Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Vice Chairman. May I have a roll call?
Chair Perrin?
Approved twenty-twenty meeting schedule.
Vice Chair Peck?
Approved meeting schedule of twenty-twenty-two.
Member Callahan?
Approved meeting schedule for twenty-twenty-two.
Member McCarthy?
Approved the meeting schedule for twenty-twenty-two.
Member Briere?
Approval.
Member Narohe?
Approved meeting schedule for twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you. Moving on to other business, we have minutes for approval for October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Any comments, revisions, deletions, additions? None being heard. May I have a motion, Mr. Clerk?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one.
May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Briere. May I have a roll call, please?
Chair Perrin?
Approved the minutes for October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one.
Vice Chair Peck?
Approved the minutes for October fourteenth.
Member Callahan?
Approved minutes for October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one.
Member McCarthy?
Approved the meeting minutes for October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one.
Member Briere?
Approval.
Member Narohe?
Well, that being said, we have no, no business. Any comments or concerns by any of the board members?
Mr. Chairman, if I may... I, I just wanted to say, I wanted to wish Ms. Wilson best of luck in her endeavor, it's her promotion, so congratulations. Through the past, you know, time she was here, helping us navigate in the meetings and the virtual and in-person stuff, and all the information and background information is very helpful, especially to me. So I appreciate it, and I'm sure my colleagues as well, so I wanted to wish you the best of luck in your endeavor. So thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you very much.
I share the same sentiments as, as Vice President, Vice Chairman Peck. Just want to congratulate you on your promotion. Once again, the city's advancing through the city, the young people, you know, and we're professionals for the city, just getting better and better, and, you know, you're gonna do a fantastic job, you know, best of luck. We'll see you, we'll see you on campus, I guess.
Thank you, I really appreciate that.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to echo my fellow board members' comments, but I think that Jessica has definitely shown an ability in the short stay that she's had with us so far, that she deserves to be elevated, absolutely, and I'm so glad that that's being noticed and being realized in the planning department. Thanks, Jess.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to, I would like to congratulate and thank you, Jessica. Thank you, you're a forward thinker, you're a self-motivator. Your short time, you, you've made improvements, and you will be a valued treasure moving forward, and I, I do wish you great success in all your, all your endeavors.
Thank you so much.
Any other comments or concerns? None being heard. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask...
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right. When I was up reviewing the project at Ronimav, I noticed the, a project that we had before the board a number of years ago, I think this, the address was thirty-one Elaine Street, and it was a barn-type carport structure that was put up, and it might have been put up without a foundation or building permit. When I went by the site, I noticed that it looks like it looked back when it came before us. It's got a plastic roof, it's got a unfinished wood face facing Elaine Street. It doesn't seem like, I'm, I'm not sure what the conditions were back on when we approved or, or, but I'd just like to see if we could look at that approval back then and see if there's something that has been missed, because that site doesn't look like it's what it should be. Let's just say that.
Sure, we can look into that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. As always, it's, you know, projects come, and, and, you know, it's, as a collective group, we need to keep an eye on them to make sure the enforcement is good, and if not, get the proper departments out there to follow up. Thank you for that. Any other comments or concerns? None being heard. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Seconded, meetings adjourn. Take care.
You, too.